My Burbank Talks presents another episode of Meet the Candidate. The show where we invite anyone appearing on the Burbank ballot in the 2024 election to join us here and give our listeners a chance to learn about their background and the issues important to them. Now, let's join our podcast.
Hello Burbank, Craig Short here with you once again for another Meet the Candidates. And today I think it's a very interesting one, one that you want to listen to and, and get some, get some information and is that the bottom line, winning information? Our guest today is Dr. Emily Weisberg, who is the Board of Education President of Burbank. And the reason I'm very happy to do this podcast is number one, she's running unopposed, which means she doesn't need to do this. But she reached out and says, I'd like to come on and do one of your candidate interviews. As I said, well, that's great. And I said, I'm going to ask the question I'm going to ask. And she agreed. And I think it's, I think it's really important and I really appreciate her coming in to talk with me. Cause as she knows, and most people know, I've been critical in the past. But if two people can't talk about things and understand each other's position, then why are we doing this? So part of the whole idea of this podcast is get to really know the person. And hopefully today you'll get to know who she is and all about her. So Dr. Weisberg, welcome to our show.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Well, my pleasure, trust me. A little background, Dr. Weisberg is an experienced educator and advocate. For over 20 years, he's worked as a teacher, facilitator, and curriculum designer with a specific focus on issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion. In 2020, she was elected to the board, one of the highest margins in the district in the city's history, earning over 30,000 votes. Won't happen issue with districts though.
Indeed.
In her time as a board member and president of the Board of Education, she has been a fierce and effective advocate for increased mental health services to students, expanding diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, improving working conditions for teachers and staff, and has taken bold measures to decrease deficit spending. She holds a doctorate in education at the University of Southern California and a master's of arts from the University of California, Santa Barbara. Ah, Santa Barbara.
Indeed.
She currently works as a seventh and eighth grade history teacher, where she specializes in helping students understand our history as it means to better understanding themselves. And well, I'll tell you what, those who don't learn from history are what did read Peter, as they say.
Correct.
Very true statement.
Yes.
Um. So my first question is, is every administrator in Burbank have to go to SC and get their doctorate?
I know. I feel like it's literally a requirement. Yes, there's a secret, there's a secret meeting where they say, did you go to USC? Are you a Trojan? Then we say fight on and then you're, then you're in there. But there's quite a gaggle of us.
That's, that's just amazing. Since everybody I'm talking to has had a doctorate from USC, which.
Well, I'll tell you, if you're, if you're looking for a doctorate in education, the thing about it is unlike UCLA has a great program, but at SC you can specialize in one of four areas. So you can do, I think it's administration, you can do educational psychology, which is what I did. And then you can do two others. So it really lets you focus in. And that's my best guess as to why everybody's at least here did that, so that they could sort of hyper-focus in the area that they were most interested in.
So let's, let's get into who you are.
Okay.
Where'd you grow up? Where are you from?
Midwest. So grew up in Chicago, was born in Chicago. My whole family, both sides, as far back as you can go. We moved from Chicago to Cincinnati when I was in my teens and then moved here at the, kind of the end of my eighth grade year, start of my ninth grade year out in Los Virginist Unified. So I grew up in Westlake Village. That's where I went to high school and to Agora High. And then came out to Sherman Oaks after I graduated because I was going to direct and teach theater.
Wow. Very good. So. What got you into the, you stood direct, you wanted to direct theater, but you wanted to teach and direct?
Yeah.
What, what was it to bug to catch you into teaching?
I have taught since I was 16 in some capacity. I mean, no joke, at my Hebrew school, when we're at my synagogue, I was an assistant teacher and I just knew it was what I was going to do my entire life. I loved school enormously, but I also had friends who hated it. And I also had, you know, like we all do, right? Challenges with my teachers who made me feel stupid or made me feel not heard or made me feel.
Enrolled my son.
Word. And so I just said to myself, well, I want to be a teacher who doesn't make students feel that way. I want to be a teacher who engages with content in a different way. And so from the time I can remember, I consider myself really lucky because a lot of people don't know what they want to do. But it's always been education. It's always been teaching since literally 16 years old.
The next logical question is what brought you to Burbank?
So my best friend had lived here for a very long time and I hung out with her all the time and I just fell in love with it. I was living in Sherman Oaks and every time I came here, I just said, here, like it's so much more calm. It has a small town feel. I can walk places. I just fell in love with it. And so when I was looking to find a new place, I said, I'm going to go to Burbank. And so looked and got super, super lucky and ended up in a duplex. I'm living in one and my best friend and her husband are living in the other one. So.
I'm actually, I watch out for each other that way too.
Yeah. And we got to quarantine together. So it was kind of an amazing lucky coincidence. So just, I loved it and wanted to be here.
So 2020 rolls around and you said, gee, I'm going to run for, I'm going to dip into politics now. What, what got you motivated to run for the board?
Yeah.
And, and do all that? What, what was the motive? Because politics is a whole lot different than everything else in the world.
It is.
It kind of takes a special breed and all those things.
Yeah.
What got you into politics and what got you to say, I'm going to do this?
So my grandfather was the head litigator for the steelworkers union for decades and decades. And so he was sort of the big driving force of my life. My family was active, but he was really, you know, he was a precinct captain. And so I would go walk with him and knock on doors and he really just helped me or sort of it helped me understand that the way to change things was to get involved and to learn about things and to keep an open mind and to connect with people and not to center myself in the conversation. So just because something might be good for me, doesn't mean it's good for somebody else. And so was very involved in local, like local activism, local dem clubs, got involved with the local dem club here in Burbank. And just started to, I don't remember which of my friends who was a teacher in BUSD started to say, hey, you know, bring up some, we all do, right? We complain about our job. There's good things, there's bad things. And I said, okay. Well, so I started to go to school board meetings and I just sat in the back for at least a year and just listened. And I said to myself, huh, okay. And one of my friends said, have you ever thought about running? And I said, no, not at all. Are you kidding? And then I started to think, well, I'm going to pay attention. I'm going to start talking to people, just have coffee with people. And if what they're telling me, I feel like my skillset and my expertise might be helpful, I'll think about running. But this was literally a year and a half, very slow progression. And I said, all right, well, I mean, there's, there's three incumbents running. There's no chance I'm going to win, but I'll put my thoughts out there. I'll put my ideas out there. We'll have good conversations. We'll see what happens. And so that's, that's really what motivated me was just a sense of like, I think I have, I would have been, at that time, there were no K through 12 teachers on the school board. I thought that was a unique perspective. And I had also spent a lot of time working, like you read in my bio and curriculum design and really just felt like I had stuff I could offer. So I said, all right, well, I'll have these conversations and I probably won't win, but I'll be able to talk about things that matter to me because nothing matters to me more than education. And then I won.
Be careful what you ask for.
No, I know. I know.
I want to go delve one more thing into your past, then we're going to get on to it.
Sure.
You're teaching history.
Yes.
Especially to, to middle school kids.
Yes.
When I was in middle school at Jordan.
Yeah.
I was not a history fan.
I know.
Um. Just didn't, it just didn't interest me.
I get it.
And as I got older and in the last 20 years, I've been fascinated now by it. And I want to travel the country. I've traveled many places in the country, you know, I've, I've walked the Freedom Trail in Boston. I've, I've been to Smithsonian's. I've, I've done a lot of, I really, you know, our civil war, the whole thing. And my next goal, if I ever get a couple of new knees, I can start moving again, is to go to Europe and visit some, you know, historical sites.
Yeah.
So how, how do you deal with those junior high kid or middle school kids?
Yeah.
Who have just glazed eyes in history, although you know that down the line, they may come to appreciate it. How, how did you, what's your focus there? How do you figure that all out?
It's a good question. So I am a, we need teachers who, I could never teach younger students than middle school. So I have nothing but deep admiration for, for our teachers who teach the littles. Middle school is like my sweet spot. It's my jam. I love them. They're like complete messes of intelligence and hormones and weirdness and, but they're so smart and they have so much to say. And so, you know, generally speaking, the connection is, so there's a National African American History Museum. Their tagline is we are living history. And that's like my favorite phrase I've ever heard. And so we talk about why what we're learning matters in the now, right? So yeah, we've been spending a lot of time recently reading George Washington's farewell address in my eighth grade class. And the conversation is not, let's spend our time there, but what connections can we make to 2024? What connections can we make to the life you're living? And so when you can bring the past into the present and connect them to that, you don't get every kid.
You can't go.
But, but as long as there's some kind of connection being made, I find that they are a lot more engaged and a lot more insightful than I think people would expect. And it's, I mean, every day with them, I'm learning something new. I gave them as an extra credit assignment. For example, C-SPAN had a really great lesson on debate watching. So I printed off their bingo card and gave them, I said, it's extra credit, don't have to watch it. It wasn't at all about like, who would you vote for? Or what are your politics about the mechanics of the debate itself? Mainly like, do you think that's a good way to learn about candidates? And we had the best conversations. It was so refreshing because I think you and I both know, talking with other adults about the presidential race is not particularly.
It's polarizing.
It's polarizing and it's often upsetting and it's, but the, but the kids are the curious.
Did the kids in general watch the debate?
Did.
And, and I mean, would they have watched anybody, you think? Or?
No.
Or?
Some of them, yes.
What do you think that's going to do to them for their future as far as being now involved in, in society a little more?
I hope what it makes them is more active and engaged citizens. And that's what I tell them all the time, you know? I'm never going to tell you how to vote, but I want you to vote. I'm never going to tell you which political party to align, but we're going to study both of them. And helping them understand that the choices they make, there's a, I used to work for an organization called Facing History in Ourselves. And they have this tagline, people make choices, choices make history. And what we talk about is that every single choice you make adds up to these monumental moments. And when you say to them, hey, where we are right now in 2024, people are going to study this moment and you're living in it. They get excited about it. And like I said, not everybody, but I would say 85% of my students, I have five classes of seventh and eighth, did the debate watching and had a, and I did not expect that that would be the number. We had a really good conversation. So I hope it sparks them to keep asking questions.
I wonder how many of those kids actually watched it with their parents also, which made it a great family experience.
Most because that was a question on the extra credit. So who did you watch with? What did they think? And I got a, we had back to school night this past week. And I had great conversations with them as well. So most of them watched with mom or dad, or if they had an older sibling and it did, it sparked great conversations. And I'll say the same thing to them when it comes time to vote. Sit with your parents when they either go to the ballot or they fill it out at home. Give me your observations on the process, you know, just so they can see, this is, this is interesting. This is kind of cool. There's more than just president on the ballot. They don't know that.
Absolutely. Well, this is our podcast tonight. There's a lot of people in Burbank ballot here, but.
I know.
Um, well, that's going to bring us to the elephant in the room. And that's not me. I know I'm a big guy, but we have another elephant in the room. And it sounds like you're very, you are very patriotic and you're very in tune.
Yeah.
Now, I have a disagreement with you when it comes to your stance on the pledge of allegiance.
Sure.
I, and I'm not going to get on my soapbox. This is your time to talk, but I'm going to say this. I respect your right to protest when the situation, the evolved is about Uvalde, correct?
That was where it started. Sure.
So I, I respect your right to protest and say, you know what? Tonight I'm not going to stand for the pledge of allegiance in protest of whatever, you know, and we're going to talk about what the reason was. But now it's been a couple of years later. You're still not standing. You're still, and I, I can't remember why you are protesting.
Sure.
Um, I don't think people who just tune in now have any idea of why you're protesting because it's not saying you, and I think you should say it at every meeting. Once again, I choose not to stand for this reason.
Okay.
Um, I think people need to understand why you're not standing up.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, in my opinion, you have your, you protest and then you, you move on.
Sure.
You know, I have a, doing it this long, kind of it bothers me a little. When I, when I coach, we have the national anthem.
Sure.
I don't let players take a knee. I don't, I make players remove their caps. To me, it's a respect. It's, and it's not so much, I respect the, the flag itself. I respect what is there and the people who fought for our country.
Sure.
For that flag and for our right to not stand.
Right.
Our right to burden the flag and all those things that are just, you know, we don't like it.
Right.
But that's, those are the price of freedom.
Sure.
So. Explain to me why you do not want to stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with everybody else.
Sure.
What your reason was for protest and why two years later it's continuing at this, at this point, and why you haven't ended your protest yet?
Yeah, that's a great, these are great questions and I appreciate you asking them respectfully because most of the time when I engage with people about it, it's less than respectful. So you're absolutely right. After Uvalde in 2022, it just felt like our government wasn't standing up for students. It wasn't standing up for teachers and I couldn't in good faith stand. I mean, I keep in mind too, look, I'm a nerdy history teacher at my core and you know, this isn't, I think the truest form of patriotism. And I, and I talk about this a lot and it's not about standing for the flag, but with my students, which is you have to love something enough to criticize it and want it to get better. So for me, I don't want to be inauthentic. I don't want to be in authentically patriotic. And I know that the history of the pledge is really, you know, what it was created in 1893, didn't really become a thing to the forties. And in 54 is when they added the under God. I mean, what, what, what I'm trying to do is be authentic, to be true to the constitution, to be true to what the founders said, to be true to what many historians and thinkers and writers have talked about, which is I love my country enough to criticize it. And the reason that I keep sitting is because think about how many school shootings have happened since Uvalde. And that's, and that's why I, if it felt like something had moved, I would stand the heck up. And I really actually am going to think about your, I wonder if there's a place in the agenda where I can briefly say, for those of you who don't know, my thing is this, I don't want it to be this performative thing where I suck up time, which is why I turn, I face, I look at the flag. I often recite the pledge. I want to, I mean, and look, there are people who choose to video me during the pledge, which I don't think is respectful either, right? And they put it up on YouTube and they slam me for not standing.
Or live in politics.
Right, exactly. But it's so, so, and I will also say that I, it was a, and I'm going to use the word excruciating. It's a little, little hyperbolic, but the decision was hard. Because I don't want to insult people and I have enormous respect for those who have served in the military, for our police. I would never want to denigrate them in any way, shape or form, but I also feel like it's important for me as a public servant and as a history teacher and just as a person. I mean, we had a shooting last week. And so for me, if there had been led meaningful legislation where I felt like our government said, you should not have to go to school in fear. I mean, I, I told the story at the last board meeting that I had a student say to me, you know, Dr. W, do you think if I jumped out the window, I could make it? I could survive if there was a shooter? The fact that I have to have these conversations with 12-year-olds.
Scary.
It's, it is, it is. I mean, it's every word. And so I absolutely understand why people don't have a different reaction. My intention is not to piss anyone off or to be disrespectful in any way. But my, my feeling is our country needs to do more to protect its students and teachers. And you know, serving in public office is a form of trying to get that done. And I hope, I hope more than anything that soon I'm going to stand up again, that something changes and that there's some more stuff in place so that our kids don't ask me, can I survive jumping out of a window?
So what in Uvalde was the main thing that really, what, what is your main focus there that really said, I've got to take a stand now? What, what was the?
It's a great question. I think I just, you know how sometimes it just, you just go enough? It's enough. I think it was that. I don't think there was anything about that.
I think we all said it's enough a long time ago for a lot of them.
No kidding. Yeah. So I don't, I don't know that there was anything about that incident that made me go now is the time. I think it was having those conversations with my kids again, being scared to go to do my job. You know, I have a classroom that has windows on both sides and it, it is, I shouldn't be terrified. I shouldn't think when I walk into my classroom or, or be terrified that I'm going to get a call from the superintendent and he's going to tell me that one of our schools had, you know what I mean? Like it just, I just, something snapped and I said, I can't. I can't anymore. It's disingenuous for me. So man, I will be the most excited person in the world to stand again. And I think your point is well taken that I should find ways to make sure that, and I have communicated it, but you're absolutely right. I don't do it every time because I'm trying to find that, I don't want it to be like.
Well, I think it's, it would say, but thirty say to say, you know, once again, you know, I'm, I'm supporting the lack of gun control and school shootings. And this is my way of doing it. And you move on.
I think that's.
But I think, I think it's, you know, if people are first time in a meeting and they see you do that, they don't know what you, you know, they don't understand the history of it.
Absolutely. So it's a great suggestion.
I would, I would, I would appreciate it because I say, I forgot why you were doing it.
It's been a long time.
Yeah. So I think it's, if you want to stay with a protest, you should reinforce it.
I like it. I really like that suggestion a lot. Thank you.
So that's what I'm here for. But thank you for talking about it too. I think it's important we talk about it.
Me too.
Um, I'm going to move on to what I think is a disaster and that's our going to districts.
Me too. I hate it.
The, the, the city would not do it. They, they, they saw through the, the form letter and, and why the board did it. I'm just a little confused why they did. In fact, when I finally found the map, it's called map 104. Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you put on the website and call it school district, districts or something instead of map one? Because, oh, is there a map 101? Is there a map 102? You know, what's can, you know, what we know and what the, the public who comes in for the first time knows are way too different things.
Totally.
So, but why, would we consider going back out of districts? Because I think this is a disaster.
I hate it.
And people, right now, two thirds of the city cannot even vote for school board member this election.
It's insane. So, so I cannot, there's no way for me to physically agree with you more. And I can guarantee you, every single board member hates it. Everyone in the district office hates it. So the way it was presented to us was this, that.
We were threatened.
Well, right. It wasn't the threatening part though. And we knew who would put the guy up to do it, which is, you know, and we knew why, which is when you district, you intentionally disenfranchise voters. You drive down the vote and those people who did it thought it would be helpful for their candidates. Our lawyers told us, no school district has beaten this yet and it's going to cost millions of dollars. And that money comes out of our general fund. And so for me, I'm not willing to spend a penny that could go to our classrooms. And they really made it seem like you're not going to win. It's a done deal. You either do it or you waste millions of dollars and you'll still lose. And so that's the way it was presented and I, we had to take the lawyers at their word. But when we went, when the district, so the, the map numbers, so we had a whole bunch of.
Right. Every submitted maps.
Blah, blah, blah. Yeah, that whole thing. And when the district and committee came to approve our map, they said, you guys don't need to district. And I say, so what I want to have happen, and I think this is something that our legislature can do, there needs to be one more step. So these people who are just doing it for funsies to threaten you, they submit their application to district. There should be a governing body that says, this is credible, this isn't credible. Instead of it being left up to us where we're, where we're being told, you either lose millions of dollars or you do this thing. So we felt like we had no choice. I can't wait to get rid of these.
Let me ask you this. I know we have all kinds of rules about co-mingling. Is this, you know, we do have our, our joint school board and city council meeting.
Yeah.
Why is this something that we couldn't have gotten with the city? You could have got with the city and say, look, it, this is a common problem for both of us here. Can we fight this together? Can we work together on this?
Yeah.
And you could have known what they were doing and, and you could have come up with the, you know, the same result that way.
Sure.
Instead of kind of going off on your own, I mean, is that thing where you can revisit now and say, look, we want to?
So when we spoke to the city about it, what they told us is they were willing to fight. They were going to go to court. They would spend the money. They would do it. And that's, that was what they had told us. So we went, okay, well, we can. So.
Right.
So, you know, good for you. Like, I don't mean that sarcastically. We're happy that somebody was able to fight it. I'm trying to figure out exactly when we can try to remove this. I know that there is the ability to do it. But I also know that there's some legal stuff. There's some court cases still tied up. So the fact of the matter was, is the way it was presented is city said, we're willing to invest to fight it. We couldn't do it. We obviously have very different funding streams. And we, we made a decision that we knew would disenfranchise voters because we also felt like we were not comfortable with using money that could be used for the classroom to fight a lawsuit. And it was a, it was a lose, lose, right? But that money belongs to our kids. It doesn't belong.
Because I really can't find, I couldn't walk up to four or five people in the city and say, you know, what district you live in? Do you think about this? But they had no idea about it.
I know.
And I think, you know, you talk about disenfranchising voters. Well, now we've really done that.
Well, you want to hear even something crazier that people don't even know yet, that I just found out? So according to an ed code in 1996, and I can't do anything about it now, but I'm sure as hell, excuse my language, I'm going to do something about it for future candidates. So I got something in the mail a couple of days ago and it said, notice of election cancellation. And I went, what? I freaked out. So apparently 1996 ed code, which is created by the legislation, it says, if you have a school board race in a districted area and you were running unopposed, you are taken off the ballot. So I just get appointed now. So that means the 22,000 people who are already completely disenfranchised don't even have the right to vote against me or vote for me. It is undemocratic. I called the registrar himself and I said, this is not, this is, this is not democratic. It is not fair. People aren't going to show up to vote for our school board maybe ever again, and it's going to erode trust in us. I had never heard of it. I mean, I just found this out. So I'm not even on the ballot anymore. How is that fair to our voters? Whether you like me or don't like me, you should be able to vote. It's crazy.
Yeah, you're not, there's, there's going to come from me here. I, I think that's absolutely nuts.
It's insane. How is that democratic?
I kind of wish you guys would never have left the city clerk and gone to the county also.
That wasn't up to us either.
Well, I was, I was told you guys did for financial reasons.
Before, oh, really?
Yeah, I was done for financial reasons. And, and since then, it's been hard, it's hard to find out things about.
No kidding.
Any part of the school board race whatsoever.
I know.
Because the county just doesn't care about Burbank. Let's face it.
All.
You know, he's just one of many. So.
I couldn't agree more. And our clerk is phenomenal. And I just.
Yeah. I mean, but I'd like to see you guys, you know, looking to return that back to, we're all, put it all together like it used to be.
I love, I couldn't agree with you more about it.
Well, this is going really well, isn't it? There's all a.
Let's fight.
We're not contention here. But once again, it's good to listen to, you know, to your points of view and listen to what you have to say and I appreciate it. So.
Likewise.
Uh, I'm now, I might throw a couple of your words against you here.
Do it.
Let's see here. Are you in your, I can't find it, but you talked about in your, in your bio about, um, fiscal responsibility.
Yes.
I'm going to bring up a couple of things which I thought were very physically, vis, fiscally irresponsible.
Please do.
Oh, that's a mouthful.
I know. Try saying that for you.
That, that burrows education. So let's start off with the fact that the board, we have Dr. Matt Hill as our superintendent. And was close to a year ago to his contract. We rip up his contract.
Yep.
And give a nice big fat raise. His contract is supposed to end in June.
Yep.
We gave him a two or three year new contract or the nice big raise.
Yep.
And then June comes along and we decide to fire him for whatever reason.
Yes.
Now, because we fired him, but we gave him the brand new contract instead of letting it expire and saying goodbye, Dr. Hill, we appreciate your time here.
Yep.
Now we're going to pay him an entire year's salary.
Yep.
As that nice big raise. Plus now we're going to get a new superintendent, which we get and Dr. Prom, who I think is doing a great job. But never been a superintendent.
Sure.
And we give him a $50,000 raise above Matt Hill's raise.
Sure.
Which, holy cow, $50,000.
A lot.
Plus we hear there's a, an administrator retiring and Stacy Katz is going to be retiring in a couple of months. Rip up her contract, give her a nice new contract with a raise and then she retires at a higher rate. So explain to me how when you're, you know, cutting things, everything else. How do we justify those kind of pay raises to administrators?
Sure.
And what's going on there? So.
Great question.
Your time.
So first, I will say that I was one of two board members to not vote to renew his contract. It was a difficult vote, but I thought it was the right vote to take. So I did not vote to give him a raise. I did not vote to extend his contract. him a raise. I did not vote to extend his contract. Um, one of the things that we, so fast forward to last summer, so about 15, I think it was 15 months ago about that, not that long ago at all, where we recognized that there was no way that, we didn't feel like there was any way that Matt could continue leading the district, that the trust had eroded so much that he had to go. So when we spoke with the lawyers and when we talked about what was happening, you know, he, he, I think Burbank Unified is one of the, you know, the top five employers in Burbank, right? We have over 2,000 employees, we have about 15,000 kids, 215 plus or minus million dollar budget. And it's really standard as part of executive contracts to have a sort of severance payout, whether it's public sector or private sector. If there had been, that was part of his contract. There was nothing that we could do about that.
If we didn't renew the contract.
I agree with you.
And that never would have happened. I mean, we don't give severance packages to teachers that we, in April, we say, you're going to be laid off in June, and we don't give them a, an extra year or a new contract. So.
Craig, I agree. That's why I voted against it. I mean, I don't have a way to rationalize because I didn't vote to renew the contract. All I can say is that there, that his severance package was, and I asked at the time, because I was concerned, it was standard, it's pretty much standard, not just, and it was interesting, I asked Andy Cantwell about this recently. He said it used to be an ed code that you had to give like 18 months when you let somebody go. Thankfully, they reduced, ed code reduced it down to 12 months. So yeah, I mean, it felt like we were hemorrhaging money for somebody that we didn't think was doing the job.
And then why did we give a big raise to.
So.
Our new superintendent who, I gotta say, great guy. I'm not, I'm not saying that was a bad decision. I'm just saying is that we didn't give him a, another raise.
Right.
As an unproven commodity.
So the way that his contract is structured is that he does not get raises. So that 50,000 was built in. So you don't, you will see him, he does not get raises now.
For how long?
For at least the length of this contract, and then we'll see when he gets his next contract. So that was there. One, so basically, we negotiated with him. He said, I don't want, I don't want raises. So that's where that comes from. And because he had served for 18 years in the district, in all the positions that you already know, he's still underpaid in incomparably sized districts. And I recognize that he still makes a lot of money. But again, you know, it's like managing an organization with that kind of budget, those number of employees, those students and parents, it's an exceptionally difficult job. But I don't want people to think, we gave him 50 grand raise, and we're continuing to give him a raise because he does not get one. So it's not a perfect solution, but I think.
Or you're going to commit to making him service contract out before you give a new contract then? Or we're not going to rip it up a year and a half down the line and say, here's a new contract for you?
So I learned during my first term that it's pretty standard to do that with superintendents, which still is weird to me.
Absolutely.
So that's something that we'll have a conversation about. Look, I, I think that what is invaluable about it, independent of, because.
I'm okay with six months in advance or something, or four or five months. I get that because you want to have responsibility. But, but over a year, a year and a half in advance to me is, is really first.
I don't disagree. I really don't disagree with you. I did, I was saying the same thing at that moment, and we were going through such a devastating fiscal bomb at that time.
Absolutely.
So it was this moment of, of just, and again, it's hard because you don't want to be the, the guy to be like, I told you so, guys. Because it was horrible.
That's my job.
Well, but so you wanted to make sure that we were bringing somebody in, because I'll tell you the biggest thing I worried about beyond being deeply concerned about our fiscal situation, was rebuilding the trust that was completely gone in the district. And so if you, you know, and that's one of the things that's hard often when you hear, look, when people run for office, you got to bring out like, uh, this is wrong and this is wrong. I totally get it. But the district that was two years ago is not the district that is today, in any way, shape or form. And you have a superintendent now who is committed to teachers, committed to students, has rebuilt that trust. And, you know, what comes next, who knows? But I can guarantee you that Matt did not, Dr. Hill did not get anything other than what was standard in his contract and is standard in other superintendent contracts.
Right. My thing was just, after got ripped up halfway through.
Oh, I agree.
That was my thing.
Yeah, me too.
And you're talking about, we're not the same schools as we were a couple of years ago. And, and one of my questions is, you know, we, we used to have a lot of California distinguished schools and blue ribbon schools.
Yeah.
And you can drive by a lot of schools and it's painted on the wall and, but the years up there. We're not, that's not happening anymore in any of our schools. We're not, that's not happening right now. I mean, the last year or two, not one school's becoming a distinguished school or a blue ribbon school.
So I don't, I would have to check on that.
Okay, and I could be wrong, but it's not, not the volume we used to have.
Right.
What can we do to change that?
So what I would say is this, it's, it's hard because the two main drivers of people leaving, not just Burbank, right? And Burbank Unified, but public school districts in, in cities across the country, it's two things, which I'm sure you've heard everybody say, right? People don't have kids anymore, and people can't afford to live here. We do exit interviews in the district, and we say like, are you leaving because the quality of education is low? No, we're leaving because we can't afford to live here. So I think there's been this sort of myth that's been spun that our, like our test scores are down, or that they're not learning as well. And certainly, test scores everywhere are down, as we're still, and again, I'm not using COVID as an excuse, but it did create like very.
Without a doubt.
Very severe learning loss. And so this is what I say to people a lot when they look at metrics. It's not, we, you don't work in a bank, right? Like, these metrics are kids. And there's a million things that go into that. So I, I do not think, and I would push back with confidence, that our academics have suffered. I don't think that's true. I think the issue is that because of the money and the funding that we receive, we do have slightly larger class sizes, still significantly smaller than in surrounding districts. Um, I don't know, I'll admit, I need to check out the blue ribbon and distinguished schools. I'll, because I don't know if it's like, once you get it, do they, you always have it?
Well, I think it's not good for the, for a year.
So I'll.
For the year it was issued or whatever.
I'll shoot you an email, but I, I just, I feel like the work that's being done in our schools is still exemplary. People are still moving here to take their kids to Burbank Unified. The issue is that people can't afford to stay.
But we did lose 12 principals like in an 18 month period. Now, is that, is that because of, you think issues with Dr. Hill at that?
100%. We haven't lost anybody since Dr. Pramo has come on board. What we have seen are people come back. So Oscar Mercias, who I call the unicorn of Burbank Unified, um, that man is.
He's outstanding. I've, I've known, I've known him since I used to coach against him.
You know.
He was a coach at Notre Dame High School.
Yeah.
When I was coaching Cressby's, I had to know him. But that was 30 years ago. So yeah, absolutely.
So when everything.
Amazing man.
Amazing man. And I think about Dr. Meg at Huerta, and I think about all these people. And I remember, you know, after Dr. Hill left, I remember sending a text to Dr. Mercias, and I said, when are you coming home? And he came home. And if you look at the district now, and this is sort of my point about what's different, the only time we're seeing principal turnover is when they're getting promoted and moving up. So Rebecca Harris, who was the principal at Disney, is a phenomenal example. Rock star principal. Now she's able to serve all of our, you know, all of our primary community, all of our elementary community in her role. So we're seeing people, what, what every business wants, right? You want really talented people to be able to impact more.
And you want the movement of, I mean, Doc Brown was a principal, Doc Mercias was a.
Mercias, right.
And you want, I mean, you want people to be promoted.
That's right.
In those positions. But we don't want schools, districts like CME coaching our people.
Right, but I.
Which is not a good thing.
If you look at the timeline of when our principals left, it has not been within the last school year.
That's true.
And so what, I think that to me, is the biggest indication of the type of positive, are we perfect? Heck no. Do we have an enormous amount of work to do? Yes. But I think where we are now versus where we were is extraordinary, extraordinary difference.
Well, we're going to talk a little bit about funding. Um, so we have a bond measure. Now, we have also a state measure, California Prop 2.
Yes.
I'm wondering how many, do you think it's a mistake to put the bond measure for the school district on the same time as a state measure? Because you might say, okay, I'll give the state, but I, I can't, I'm not going to do twice. I'm not going to do, or they might cancel each other, and I won't know on both of them now.
Yeah.
Do you think it was a bad time to put that onto the, the ballot? And then, let me ask you this also.
Sure.
A lot of people don't, they don't trust the board. They really don't. Um, and I was one of those people for a long time.
I get it.
And I, I was worried that if we pass this and give you a, a billion dollars, that you're going to, you know, have all your friends come and be on the committee to decide where it's all going to go.
Sure.
And the accountability.
Sure.
And all, you know, the infrastructure projects. Burrows was a disaster. When they rebuilt Burrows, it's falling apart.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of shoddy work and craftsmanship, and maybe we got the bottom of the barrel.
Yeah.
You know, for what we could pay for.
I've heard that.
So how do we make sure that we have people on oversight who are going to have the best, you know, to get the district built for the next 50 years and not do favors or, you know, I understand our saying on that, right? So.
Oh, yeah.
So what are your, you know, what are your thoughts on, A, having the same time as the state?
Mm-hmm.
And then how are we going to make sure that people know it's going to be dealt with correctly?
I love these questions so much. No, like I literally, because I get to talk, I get to respond to them. So first thing to know about the state bond is that we would get none of it if we weren't hurting, putting our bond on the ballot, because you basically need to match funds. So we stand, if we match funds, I think, and I'll ask, I'll get clarification, but I think we get something like $40 million, which is, I'll take every penny of it, but it's, we have about $1.2 billion of infrastructure repair that our facilities master plan highlighted. The bond that, the bond continuance that's on the ballot will generate about $500 million. We would get nothing from the state bond if we weren't able to put up matching funds, which we couldn't do without the bond. So yeah, I don't want there being two bonds, but I am happy that we will hopefully be in a position to get that matching fund from the state.
The bond money for the district, and I don't know, I have not read the bond measures of state, neither one can be used for any kind of salaries or anything else. They can only be used for infrastructure?
Absolutely. So the thing I, somebody taught me this, and it's the thing that makes the most sense in my, in my brain, is bonds are for buildings, parcel taxes are for people. So one of the things that we've been putting out that's in the bond language itself, but it's really long and bashing. And also in our flyers, is that it can literally only be used for infrastructure. You cannot pay anybody with it. You can't use it for anything like that. But you can free up some general fund dollars that you can use for other things. So lit, and to answer your question, so we have a, is it called SFOC, the civilians, oh my God, it's the Oversight Committee that oversees the bond.
Right.
I don't believe the board has any say in who is on that committee, nor do I think that we have any say. So.
Who, who points that committee then?
So my guess would be facilities, the superintendent, and a number of other people. So we've had the same committee for a very long time. Um, they don't interact with us, and that's the correct thing to do.
Well, I'll tell you what, those people in committee, we're, we're here when, when Burrows construction, they should not be on the committee anymore.
I think it'll be a new committee. So one of the things, you know, we did this, we do this ethics training every year. And one of the things that always resonates with me about it is, it's not about, it's not just about doing the right thing. It's about the perception that you're doing the right thing. And I think.
Absolutely. That's 100%.
Equally important. So one of the things that we've been talking about is making sure that we take, we do what we're supposed to do, but we're, I don't want our hands touching anything. The, the board is there to approve the contracts once they're done, but not to create them, not to call in favors, not to do any of that stuff. And, and again, I wasn't on the board the last time there was a bond on the ballot, but I talk about that ethics line constantly. If it even looks like we're doing something unethical, we've got to stop doing it. So, um, you know, hopefully, if you have Mr. Cantwell or somebody else come in and talk, he can speak more to that. But the Oversight Committee is the one who's really doing that. And the, the other thing too, that I think we have to spend some time thinking about is, is part of the reason why Nate Burrows was built so poorly because we didn't use skilled union labor? Like, who are we using to build?
Yeah. I mean, I really don't, I don't remember all that because I was not involved at that time much. But I just know that, that a lot of complaints from a lot of, it's just, it's falling apart already.
Oh, yeah.
It's only been what, 20, 25 years.
Not that long.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's.
So there are, there are very clear rules about what we can do and what we can't do, and where our hands are and where they aren't. And so if, I mean, for people who watch board meetings, if they ever see on a consent agenda, that's usually where contracts show up. We don't put that on there. We can ask questions, which I often do. We can pull it if we're confused about it. I pulled something recently because I saw we were paying a quarter of a million dollars to this cap company to transport our special education students, which we obviously need to do. But my question was, could we be partnering with somebody that uses clean energy? Can we find somewhere that's a little less expensive while not, you know, losing any quality? So there are times where we do pull things, but I have no say in who we hire to do those jobs. And I think it's important for people to know that.
I look forward to, number one, seeing that bond pass, because I know our, shape our schools are in. But number two, is holding the district to a standard that the schools will be built in the proper way and with the proper, you know.
Couldn't agree more.
We're gonna, we're gonna turn the page a little bit here, and, and we're going to go back to kind of what we talked about before. We, we talked about Uvalde, but if we understand, I've been a high school coach for 40 years. I taught in the classroom for eight, nine years myself. Every teacher knows, no matter what they tell you, they all know who gets bullied. All the kids know who gets bullied.
Yep.
You can have a district policy that says, we are 100% anti-bullying and, and all the, all the, all the great sayings and the posters on the wall and all those things, but the bullying goes on, and these school shootings are being caused by kids who were bullied and feel they have no other recourse but to act out. It's just so unfortunate. Of course, we all know it's that mental health thing and, and that type of stuff. But.
Yeah.
I've had ideas such as, why not have students in the school, a group of four or five students, who are our leaders in the school, who know who's being bullied, see when it happens, work to get it fixed, and stay on it. Instead of, you know, because, let's face it, you know, everybody turns their back a little bit and says, well, you know, I see that kid's getting bullied, you know, but they don't, nobody does anything.
Sure.
And that's the systemic problem after a period of time.
Yeah.
If we had a way of curing that, whether it was peer groups in the schools, who always, they know right from wrong, and they want to be, make a difference. And there's, there's a lot of really smart kids who want to make a difference.
On.
So what can be done? Let's say, so we have bullying in this, and this is not just Burbank, this is every school there is.
Absolutely.
This is not our board's fault, anybody else's fault, but it happens.
Yeah.
But we all know, we think that the shootings are being caused by bullying over a period of time. So what, what are your thoughts on that? What can be done to really help fix that problem?
I love that question. I mean, it's, it's, and it's a sort of impossible one to answer. I can, so here are a couple of things that I think. I think that we know that not every kid that gets bullied turns around and does something extreme like a school shooting. And I think you hit the nail on the head when you talk about mental health. So one of the things that I think has been so great to see at our high schools, for example, is, you know, we have a student mental health board, we have link crew, we have ASB, we have all these different affinity clubs that you can join. And I think those are a step in the right direction where you feel like.
Your step, but is, is the bully going to come out of a shell? I mean, by the, the kid being bullied coming out of a shell and wanting to participate in that? That, that's my thing. If, as a coach, if I see a kid every day, I say, you suck. And next thing, you see the first couple of days, the kid says, oh, yeah, laughs it off. If I see it, you know, 35 days in a row, the kid's going to start no question. So, yeah, we have, we have these things, the kid can, you know, oh, you can go join this, join that.
Right.
But that's still their choice to go join it.
No question.
Compared to somebody being there in support, to the kid who doesn't want to, you know, who, who gets into a shell, wants to go home and hide in his room every day.
So there are a couple of other things that are there. And the question is, to your point, like, do people use these things? So we obviously have a see something, say something. We have an anonymous tip line that you can call. If you see something, you hear something, that you're scared for someone, you, you know, no one wants to be the snitch, right?
Right.
But you can do it that way. Our teachers are phenomenal at identity.
And I don't want to say our teachers don't care. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, but they know what's going on more than anybody believes.
There's no question. I also think, you know, our school psychologists, I think our, our counselors, but the reality is, to your point, all of those things, do we, is someone going to take advantage of them? Because some does slip through the cracks often. And so part of what we're trying to do to And so part of what we're trying to do to address that, and I think it's something that we were slow to do. I think a lot of districts are slow to do because everyone, we all kind of hyper fixate high school, right? High school, high school, we gotta start in elementary.
Correct.
So that's one of the things that district has shifted pretty dramatically is the amount of focus we're putting on our elementary schools in regards to bullying, in regards to hate speech, in regards to mental health. And so I, I am hopeful. Is it a, is that going to fix everything? I don't think so, but we, we should, and I would say this to anybody in any district, if you start in elementary, hopefully those seeds that you plant blossom as they get into middle and they get into high school. And it changes the tone and tenor a little bit. So that's something I think we hadn't previously done a great job of. But I'm really happy about, and that's why I think, you know, having Rebecca Harris there, having Dr. Mercedes, Dr. Knapp, that they're really focusing on those things. The other thing that I asked for, which has also been helpful and we implemented last year is that every five weeks we get a a report, which is all of the information about any student incident. Now, this isn't going to pick up maybe a kid who is silently suffering like you bring up, right?
Right.
But if there's a kid who is bullying someone who is constantly on a kid or has been called into the principal's office and we start to see trends every five weeks, that's basically a grading period. Then we're able to say, wait a minute, I'm seeing this at this site. We need to get more resources here. I'm seeing things at this site. Let's have FSA come in and, and do some, some, you know, community circles. So we're paying a lot more attention in that manner to try to see if we can catch things before they happen. Sergeant Lauffer, who is in, I think the head of our juvenile division, she's, at least she's unbelievable. And she also works with our school services team with Dr. Paramo and talks about, they do threat assessment as well, which you can do by looking at, you know, myriad things. So I think the short answer is, right? We don't know. The, the longer answer is we're starting younger. I think data is really, really helpful. I think reminding our students that, hey, you have this resource here that you can use anonymously. So that if you see something and you're, it just makes your spine tingle a little bit, just call. So I'm hoping that those things make an impact, but it is, it's an epidemic, right? We need, and, and I don't think anyone yet has, has found a cure. You know, but we keep looking.
I mean, getting rid of assault weapons is the first part of that cure, but um,
Wouldn't that be nice?
I, I, there's no simple answers. There's no easy answers. But I wanted to hear what I had to say about it.
Yeah.
There's probably a lot more we can get into, but we're kind of getting at near the end.
I know.
Now, here's the, here's the funny part, because the podcast for anybody appears in the Burbank ballot. And now we're finding out each one could appear on the Burbank ballot, although that's not your choice.
No.
But I do like to give the, the candidate, or at least the person some time to talk to the voter.
Sure.
And explain what your vision is going to be for the next four years or the next 10 years in the district. Knock the people, tell them what you're all about, what you want to do, what you'd like to accomplish. You know where your camera is right here.
I love it.
I will let you, give you as much time as you want to, to put the message you out that you want to right now. So
I appreciate that.
Time is yours.
Well, so one of the things that I'm still going to do despite no longer being on the ballot is I'm still going to knock on doors. It's really important to hear what voters care about. And I'm so angry about how disenfranchised everybody has been through this process. I don't want people to stop caring about the school board. I don't want people to stop scaring, caring about schools. I want people to stay invested and involved. So we're, I'm still going to get out there and talk with people. I'll still continue, you know, once, once the new term kicks in, I do weekly, I call them office hours, where anyone can either zoom or call me and we can talk about things. But the next four years for me are really going to be about setting the district up to be in a better place than it was four years ago. So I can talk about a couple of things. So I know you've had people on here talk about the abysmal way that we're funded. So there's sort of two categories that I'm going to be advocating at the state level to change because it's not enough just to say the state doesn't give us enough money. The end. They do. They don't give us enough money, but you can only say that for so long until you then have to try to fix it. So we need to change it so that we're funded by enrollment, not attendance, because we don't hire teachers based on attendance. We don't buy supplies based on attendance. We do it based on enrollment. We're one of only, I think, seven states in the entire country. Us, Mississippi and a couple of other states. And while I'm sure Mississippi is a beautiful place to be, I don't want us coupled with them when it comes to education statistics. I also, we have, I'm going to try to make complicated things simple. So we have something called unduplicated pupils. And what that means is if you're a student who is either an English language learner, low socioeconomic, homeless or foster youth, you get extra money from the state so that you can help support those kiddos in a more meaningful way. But you can't be counted in more than one category. So let's say you are homeless, but you're also an English learner. Now, when your test scores come out, that kiddo is separated into all the categories into which they fall. But we only receive funding for one of those categories. So we're not getting the financial support we need to help that student. We're just getting enough for one part of where they're struggling. So that's something else that needs to be changed. So I would argue that most of our legislators probably don't know anything about this. Educational funding is complicated. And so one of the things that I'm going to focus on in the next four years is advocating strongly to get these things on a ballot, to get strong pieces of legislation written. I don't fault other districts for getting more money. They have higher at-risk student populations. But we are so deficient when it comes to the kind of funding we get from the state. I mean, I don't know that people know this, the state gives you no money for facilities. So the money that we get from the bond, that's what we use. So that's something I'm trying really hard to focus on. Also voter education. So more people learn about this. Hopefully more people run for school board, advocate at the state and local level. Um, another focus for me is I'm sure people hear me talk about diversity, equity and inclusion a lot because it's, you know, it's
Buzzwords.
Buzzwords. It's a thing that everybody talks about. What I don't think that people and I include, you know, our education community, D E I doesn't stop in the classroom. It also is about the type of labor we use to build our classrooms. Are those people being paid a living wage? Are they being treated fairly? Are we including our neurodiverse students as part of the conversation in diversity, equity and inclusion? Are we talking about our teachers? It has to be a holistic sort of 100% everyone on board. I think it gets sort of marginalized in this thing where, well, you only care, when you talk to the E I, you only care about this student group and this student group. And sure, that's what equity is, right? You're reaching out to student groups that need more support. But it also means we have to think deeply about every aspect of our district from the way we build things, to the way we interact with our students, to the way that we treat our teachers. So that's a big thing for me. Um, I want to make sure that we are also being transparent and accountable with our finances. So we had that third party fiscal audit, Vicmat came in, told us what was wrong, told us all the things that we needed to fix. And we have regularly scheduled updates and that needs to continue to happen because we have a lot of work to do. I think we're in, again, we're in a much better place than we were a year and a half ago, but we've got a ways to go. So I think that's a big focus should be for me and everybody on the board. Um, I also think that helping and I think part of this is because in an election cycle, everything tends to skew negative, right? Because if something's working, why would you need to vote for somebody new, right? I get it. But I, I would love people to see the district as it is and not as it was. And I know that's a very hard thing to do, but you know, to, to your point a little bit ago about that huge wave of principles we had leaked, right? That's true. But that doesn't happen anymore. So how can we help our community see both what we need as far as assistance? But also all the things that are there to celebrate? I think that's a really important part of our job as board members to highlight the work our teachers are doing, kiddos are doing. And say, look, have you, have you looked at our district lately? It's actually pretty phenomenal. I think that's a huge part of it. All of that, all of that, you know, just those couple of things. But, you know, and again, to be there to support every student that walks through our doors and to make them feel seen, heard, supported and, and elevated in every possible way.
Wow.
Just that.
By the way, I don't think the high school kids like being called kiddos.
You know what though? I teach, I taught, you probably not. This, I'm a middle school teacher through and through.
I'm a high school guy. So, you know.
I know, I know.
But I, I really, you know, I, I left unpacked there.
Yeah.
Um, I think it'd be nice, maybe down the line, once after the election cycle's over, they'll come in and have another podcast and talk about a lot of, because of lots going on that we, we can't even touch on here.
I'd love to.
To talk about, you know, you know, canceling, you know, books and revising history and all those things. And I'm sure you have a lot of opinions on.
Oh, my goodness.
So I think there's going to be some good opinions down the line.
I'd love to. Anytime.
Well, Dr. Wise, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you coming in to, to spend time with us here.
For having
You know that I've been a critical, very critical, but I gotta tell you what, you opened my eyes to some things. I respect what you have to say.
Thank you.
I think you do have some good vision. I think you do want to go in the right direction.
Hope so.
The fiscal audit, you know, the autopsy basically was a great idea. I thought it was much needed. So I think, you know, we are going in the right direction. So, but I appreciate you coming in.
Sure.
And giving me that chance to ask my questions.
Anytime. I mean it.
And I think it's important. I really do.
Yeah, me too.
So thank you once again.
Thank you.
And I will once again throw out there, if you are on the Burbank ballot or you're running unopposed and get taken off the ballot, please send me an email at news@myburbank.com and let me know. And we would be glad to have you on the show and let people get to know who you are and, and why you are. So thanks again for listening. Frank Schreiber saying thank you once again. Goodbye.
Thank you for watching the latest My Burbank video. If you have it in your heart, please consider helping us by clicking on the super thanks down below. Or even better, go to our channel and consider a membership. Your support is what keeps My Burbank going strong.